Good evening. It's 6:00 PM on November 9th, and I'll call our town council meeting to order. Please take a moment of silence to acknowledge all those that do and currently serve, enabling us voting privileges, freedom, and our safety. Thank you all. In accordance with Mass General Law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if there's anyone in the audience, please identify yourselves.
Nobody recording?
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 Order suspending certain provisions of our open meeting law. Our first agenda item this evening is approval of our September 14th minutes. I would just ask that Kathy's listed in some of the motions, and I will reach in the audience to those of us that are here tonight to pick up on those motions, seconded or whatever needs to finish. And I also want to thank Jackie and Jeannie both for an outstanding job on the minutes. I had a couple of people ask me why the September 14th open session minutes haven't been approved to date. There was opposition, and I can say I spent most of my time with Jeannie. We talked about it. There was more dialogue between the council. But our minutes are a synopsis of the meeting. They don't have to include every single point that's mentioned. Our meetings, as we all know, are video recorded, so if someone needs that much detail, they can always refer back to the video. I would also say if, and I made this comment before months ago, that if anybody has issues with the minutes, we can always contact Jeannie or Jackie ahead of time and probably resolve those issues prior to the meeting, and it'll just make our meetings that much more efficient and productive. So that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the September 14th, 2021 open session minutes, please.
I move to approve the September 14th, 2021 open session minutes.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jeannie?
Minutes are all Jackie. I review them, but it's all Jackie, so she gets all the credit for that.
Okay, I'm glad I mentioned you both. Most of my dialogue is with you, but I know there's a great team here, and we all work together to accomplish the same goal. So I commend both of you, but thank you. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor, and seeing and hearing no other discussion, we'll all call votes, starting with Don.
I'll abstain because I wasn't a member at the time.
Okay, I'm a yes. And moving on to Marilyn?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
I'm sorry. My screen jumped around a little bit. You're right, right in the middle now. And I have a blank screen at the bottom. I'm not used to seeing that. But Connor being a yes, the motion passes. Thank you, and we'll move along to our...
Just a point of information, since we only have four of us here, it passes with majority of who's present, correct? Or do we need four approvals? Because I said I just can't approve it because I wasn't there. Just want to be sure we're clear.
Yeah, it's my understanding in Maryland. I'll let you comment as well. As long as we have a majority here in a quorum, we're good to go.
That's correct. That was one of the issues that we discussed with the review, the charter review that we recently went through. Majority of those present and voted. So it's okay.
That's great. So motion for our open session minutes dated October 6th of '21.
I'll do that.
And I was going to say, I kind of have it written out a little bit. Don, could you read that motion, please?
Oh, the most, uh, motion to approve October 6th. Again, I don't think I can, I can, can I make the motion even if I can't vote on it?
October 6th, that's a blur for me. Were you not present at that meeting as well?
I was not present for any executive session meetings since I came up. When's the day I came on, Jeannie? Do you remember?
October 26th is when you came on, so I would say maybe Connor and Marilyn should share the next motions and seconds for the next three motions for the minutes.
I would agree, just for caution purposes, let's go with that, so.
Okay, with that being said, motion to approve October 6th, 2021 executive session minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Don?
Abstain.
Thank you. Approval of October 12th, special minutes from that particular meeting.
Okay, I motion to approve October 12th, 2021 special meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Don?
Abstain.
Okay, and our last motion is from October 26th, open session minutes.
I think we skipped one.
I skipped one, yeah. It was item D's been skipped.
Okay, we did the 14th, we did the 6th, correct?
Yeah, and we did the first 12th, but now we have the open session 12th.
The 12th had two meetings, a special meeting and the regular meeting following it.
Correct, okay.
I can read that one.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
I move to approve the October 12th, 2021 open session minutes.
And I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second and discussion. Hearing and seeing none. I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Don?
Abstain.
Okay, now we're down to the last under three. Approval of October 26th, open?
That one I can do. Motion to approve the October 26th, 2021 open session minutes.
And I'll second that, please.
Okay, a motion and a second, discussion. And hearing and seeing none. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your help with the minutes. Mary, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The Board of Health met, the reconstituted Board of Health, that is, met last Tuesday, the 2nd. Rebecca Torscha and Dr. Jobins were present, along with the Chair, Chris Johnston. They had a very productive meeting with the discussion that centered, unfortunately, but obviously around COVID-19 and the town's positivity rates and so forth. Ultimately, the board did vote to rescind the mask mandate for indoor public places throughout the town. However, I'll note, as they did, that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has extended the mandate for students in all schools, as well as staff members and teachers, until January 15th of 2022. But that board was very vigorous in their conversation and thoughtful, and so I think they're going to serve the community very well. The other board that continues to occupy so much attention is the Eastern Hampton Veterans District. We continue to not be in receipt of a written waiver of compliance with the regulations for a district operation for fiscal '22, although we've been advocating for it since Labor Day. It was a very frustrating issue. We can't seem to get an explanation out of the Secretary's office in Boston. So today I happened to reach out to Representative Pupolo. I know he's going to participate in tomorrow's event at the Council on Aging, which is a drive-through luncheon for the veterans, and I believe he's also going to participate in the parade on Thursday. So I thought that maybe a conversation with him might stimulate some action out of Boston. Anyway, we spoke. I gave him the background, the thumbnail sketch of what's been going on, and he said he would do everything he could to facilitate that. And then later on in the day, I did get a call from one of his aides in the Boston office indicating that they would be on it first thing tomorrow morning. So the problem is that Michelle Barrett still doesn't have access to the necessary software that the Commonwealth uses to process veterans' benefits, and it's really beyond me. The Commonwealth's argument against giving her that is that the district is not properly staffed. But our answer to that is, so you'd rather have no staffing than short staffing. And in fact, we believe now that we're fully staffed with the hours that Michelle is putting in. So it continues to be a work in progress. We're determined to get it solved, and I know I've said that before, but it's just an ongoing problem that should really be remedied ASAP. I mentioned the parade on Thursday morning. That's going to start at the VFW. So it'll be a short parade down to the center of the main entrance to Town Hall for the re-flaying ceremony that will take place at 11:00 AM. So if your schedules allow, please participate. We did meet on November 4th, which was last Thursday, I guess, with the police union, and I think that we have reached a tentative settlement, which the details of which I'll report on in executive session later on tonight. We did also receive an estimate for the feasibility study on the police station. It's a rather large amount, as I noted in my report, 8.8 million for new construction and nearly 4.7 million for rehab. Several of the items in the itemization need further discussion. So Joe Dunn of the DPW has sent an email to Hill Engineering, and we will have a discussion about some of those particulars before any decisions are made or recommendations are made. But in any case, it's one step closer to being included on the comprehensive capital plan for town council review. We did receive the DPW's capital plan, all 143 pages of it. A remarkable effort by Bruce and the Department of Public Works and everyone that contributes to that. It encompasses every building in town, vehicles, you know, you've seen it all before, but it's really impressive when you look at it. It's a two inches high when it's in hard copy, but we'll be working on that through the Capitol meetings. I have established a new advisory committee this year. Ralph Page, Mike Kane, Ryan Quimby, Steve Lonergan, and Jim Broderick have agreed to participate on the Town Manager's Advisory Committee. We've also been offered and already been rejected, but last Wednesday I got an email from Eric Lesser's office indicating that the Commonwealth was considering a supplemental budget for the distribution of additional ARPA funds up to $250,000. And they asked us to submit our request by 1:00 PM the following day, so we scrambled around, or Bruce and Ryan scrambled around, I should say, and submitted two projects through my office. And on Friday, we found out that that supplemental budget was not going to be honored, or at least our particular requests were not included. So that was a fair amount of effort with, unfortunately, no good result. The Westcom Board of Directors met a couple of times last week. They are, the Westcom organization is now up to 49 employees with an opportunity to soon have the Town of Ware participate, and Sheriff Kochi at the Hampton County Sheriff's Office has asked that his field supervisors also be included. So the board is contemplating inclusion of those additional personnel, which begs the question of their HR services. So that's an ongoing issue that the board, of which obviously I'm a member, is trying to resolve. We have negotiated a new contract for municipal solid waste services to begin next July. The new vendor is Casella Waste Management of Massachusetts, and the issue before you tonight is solely a request for approval of a five-year term as required under Chapter 30B, Section 12. And I'll let Steve Lonergan give you the details of that when you reach the financial section of your agenda. The town unfortunately suffered two very key resignations, one of which I articulated in the report because I was aware of it last week. Corinne Trangisi has decided to pursue a different career in the private sector, so she'll be leaving the town's employ shortly. Corinne has done a phenomenal job as the benefits coordinator, and it's a very esoteric subject matter. In an exit interview that I conducted with her, I will share with you that I think part of the reason she's leaving is the upheaval that has occurred throughout her tenure in town. There's been several different HR directors. There's been several periods of time when there was no HR director. There's been interim HR directors, and I think she just never felt secure in the position. And I'm probably putting a little bit of my own interpretation on that. But in any event, she's moving on to the private sector, and we will surely miss her talent. As I said, it's a very specialized area, and we do not have anybody in town now who has that expertise. So we may have to reach out to some third-party administrators for things like the Affordable Care Act administration and time-intensive tasks that we won't be able to accomplish otherwise. The other resignation that's not included in the report, and only because I was just informed of it yesterday, is Bethany Yao, our Planning and Community Development Director, has offered her resignation to me to be effective December 23rd. I'm very happy for Bethany. She's decided that she wants to pursue a different career path. I'm very sorry for the town because she is a tremendous talent, a wonderful worker, gets along with everyone, as you know from last meeting. She's been nominated as the Rising Planner of the Year. I'm quite confident that she'll be successful at whatever she does. She's pursuing a career in the nursing field, and I wish her the very best, and I'm sure all of you do as well, but creates a huge hole. There's about a dozen projects at minimum pending in planning. So we'll be reaching out to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for some assistance in the interim. But those two resignations are huge losses for East Long Meadow. Lastly, I did appoint Michael Fox, Michael J. Fox, to the Recreation Commission. Mike is a local businessman. He's a veteran. He's got kids that participate in the town sports activities. He's a coach. He's very enthusiastic, has met and worked with Donna Prather before, so he's quite happy to participate in the Recreation Commission. So kind of a mixed bag tonight, folks, of the good, the bad, and the ugly. But that's what we have for you tonight.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions for Mary? Okay, moving along here with communications and correspondence. I have a letter that I'd like to read into the record this evening. It's from Stephen and Aaron Trussiel, residing at 28 Country Club Drive here in East Long Meadow. The letter states as follows. "Councillors, I am writing with a profound sense of bewilderment at the circumstances in handling of the recent resignation of our town manager, Mary McNally, and to request that the town council publicly address the issue. Multiple local media outlets have reported that Mary McNally resigned due to a toxic environment that allegedly included verbal abuse from a sitting town consular. While I'm not in position to comment on the veracity of these reports, it does seem odd that a town manager would unexpectedly resign before their term was completed, particularly one who has gained the respect of multiple department heads, as evidenced by the letter read into the record at the 10/26 council meeting and who freely admits to having no alternative engagement in place at the time of the resignation. Further, the subsequent comments by other sitting consellers laminating Mary McNally's resignation and suggesting that the alleged behavior did in fact take place are wholly inadequate. The council's apparent failure to support a qualified, well-regarded town employee of any level is a disservice to the voters who elected them and embarrassment to our community. Today's headlines continually refer to the challenges of identifying and retaining qualified employees across every industry and town government is no different, as demonstrated by the recent resignations in our Health and Recreation Department. In addition to high cost of worker transition and damaging loss of historical knowledge is well documented throughout all aspects of our economy, particularly since the emergence of COVID-19. I hereby request that the council make public the precise circumstances regarding Mary McNally's resignation, including any and all allegations of misbehavior associated with the council itself. In addition, the council should make known the corrective actions being contemplated along with the timeline for implementation to ensure that we do not end up in a similar situation again." The cover letter by the Charter Review Commission dated February 2nd, 16, refers to improving our town's government's structure and its ability to meet the current challenges and of the future. We owe it to our town and ourselves to proceed responsibly. Before I open the floor up, under "Council Comments", I would just like to mention that the majority, and this is in response somewhat to the request by this document, the majority of our council support and help our manager on an on-dated basis, we feel, without overstepping our boundaries. And I had many conversations with Mary, and I believe that she would support that reference as stated. Mary's leaving is for one reason and one reason only. Disciplinary action can be very difficult when it comes to our council. We're very limited what we can do with our choices, but as everyone knows, we are working on council conduct and etiquette to try to put some measures in place. But it's well-known that there are really very few choices, and those choices are that the general public or residents could come forward and request a recall vote in a situation like that, or a particular council member could resign. So those are our options. We support Mary 150%, and I'm pretty comfortable that she feels the same way, but I'll let her speak on that herself if she would. And we're doing everything we can to remedy this and prevent situations from this to repeat themselves going forward while Mary's here and for whoever takes her place down the road. So before I open up the floor, Mary, do you have any comments at all?
Thanks, Mike. I would just echo what you said. I am leaving for one reason only. And you and Kathy Hill, while she was president, as well as the rest of the consellers, have been very supportive, and I said that intentionally in my letter of resignation. I made that point, that this is not an indictment by me of the council as a whole. It's my dissatisfaction with a particular behavior, which I found very untenable after 26 months. So I don't want to belabor the point. I thank you and the rest of the council for everything you've done for me and with me. Together, I think we've made some great progress over the last couple of years. I'm sorry that it won't continue with me at the helm, but it will continue, I have no doubt, because you have great staff here. And my main objective or hope is that the next town manager and the department heads who serve that person or are accountable to that person will be treated with proper respect and decorum by all members of the council in compliance with the requirements of the town charter.
Thanks, Mary, and I would just like to reference because it was brought up in the document that I just read into the record. That last week I read a document into the record that the department had signed, and to be quite frank, that letter and no signatures speak volume on how everyone that's worked for you over the duration feel as well. So I think it's very clear how the council feels, the department heads, and 99% of the residents as well. At this time, we are in "Council Comments" here. Are there any other consellers that would like to make any comments at this point in time? Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. First of all, thank you to Aaron and Stephen Crucial for, I'm taking the time to write the letter. This is a third meeting where we've read something into the record. It's a little discouraging, to be honest, but we'll get through it. I am going to comment on October 12th, which is when we read Mary's letter of resignation into the record. And at that time, four of the six consellers spoke up in support of Mary and also perhaps shared experiences regarding the elephant in the room, the behavior that has taken a life of its own. Counselor Kathy Hill mentioned at that time that if this counselor remained on the council, that it would become a distraction for us, and sadly, that's what's happening. You know, we have lots of work to do, and yet what we're dealing with right now is, and this is a matter of public record, I'm not betraying any secrets. We have a request under the Massachusetts Public Records, Mass General Law, Chapter 66, for a Freedom of Information request to the town manager, town council president, town clerk, Consulors Richards and Hill, made between the period of time September 14th, 2021 to October 8th, 2021. And what they're looking for, this person is looking for all emails and text messages that possess certain words, "O'Connor," "resignation," "Tom," or "behavior." As you are likely aware, use of personal phones or email accounts does not shield the author or recipient from this request. So since this request has come in, our town leaders, our town officials, have been gathering information, whether it's emails. And basically, Ryan Quimby has done a great deal of work, along with Jeannie Quaglady, getting this information together. This information has produced hundreds of emails. And now we're going through these emails, not we personally, but our staff. And there's a price attached to all of this. This is costing the town money. I don't know what we're hoping to gain by this, but that's one of the distractions that has played out since the resignation letter was written, read into the record on October 12th. The other distraction is a open meeting law complaint against the town council. And this complaint has been logged by Tom O'Connor, and it will be hopefully addressed on Monday, November 14th. It's not posted yet, but the plan is to post this meeting at 6:00 in the evening on Monday, the 15th. And this complaint will be heard in open session, not an executive session, but an open session because as consellers, we have nothing to hide, and we really need to get past this. And so I invite you all to please join us, and hopefully we can get to the bottom of what the issue is and move forward and deal with the good business of the town of East Long Meadow. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any other comments from the council? Don?
I wasn't on the council until...
I wasn't on the council until recently. You know, I had that momentary retirement, I guess. And I but I was walking to town hall today and I was walking by Mary and I was telling her, I said, when I was debating about whether I wanted to put my name in for the nine-month gig here, that I told her, I said, well, you know what? I had a 51, 49. I really support Mary. You know what? I'm gonna, I'm in, I'm all in. And then no sooner did I commit, she resigned. I went, no! But I think she's done an amazing job and she definitely, Mary, I could say right to you through this TV, you will definitely be missed and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Don. I'm sure Mary feels the same way. Okay. With without, I don't see anybody else having anything under council comments. So I will ask Jeannie, do we have anyone signed up for public comments this evening?
Yes, Pat Henry requested to be on public comment tonight.
Okay, Don Mackey, do you see Pat Henry in the audience?
I do, and I did just promote him.
It looks like his hand's up, I'm seeing that, I don't know, but he is muted. Pat, if you can hear me, your microphone is muted.
All right, I'll try it again shortly.
I'm gonna try to make a connection, Don.
Yeah, I have to wait for him to I guess he's probably gonna log back into the meeting because he did not go back to the attendees list. He seems to be out of the out of the Zoom at the moment, but when he reappears, I will let you know, I guess.
Okay. He's out right now and there's no indication on how long this could take for him to reconnect, is that correct?
That's, that is correct.
Okay, so I know we had technical difficulties last week as well. Those can would continue, could continue on and we have three, three public hearings this evening, so.
Mike, I'm gonna try him one more time.
Okay.
He's gone again.
Okay. We'll see what happens as we work through some of these issues, but they are scheduled public hearings. It's unfortunate these not able to connect again. But so our first public hearing is scheduled for 6:15 and you all know that we are in the time restraints for that public hearing. And this public hearing is regarding the stretch energy code bylaw. It's continued from our October 12th meeting. This is a continued public hearing for required second reading for the proposed stretch energy code bylaw. Don, do you have the byline in front of you where you could read it into the record?
This time, right?
Yes.
See if I can, if I can find it.
If you don't, I do. I have it up, Mike, if that's easier.
Okay, I do have it, but you can, you can do it, I mean, through the chair. If Connor wants to do it, I do have it up.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as we have it read and I'd appreciate it, so.
Sure, I'm gonna read it now.
Sure.
To see if the town council will vote to enact Chapter 5.05D of the Town of East Long Meadow general bylaws entitled Stretch Energy Code for the purpose of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy pursuant to Appendix 115.aa of the Massachusetts Building Code 780 CMR, the Stretch Energy Code, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto, with an effective date of January 1, 2022, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, or take any other action relative thereto. Proposed general bylaw as follows, Chapter 5.05D Stretch Energy Code. And then Section 5.05D-1 Definitions, International Energy Conservation Code, IECC. The International Energy Conservation Code, IECC, is a building energy code created by the International Code Council. It is a model code adopted by many state and municipal governments in the United States for the establishment of minimum design and construction requirements for energy efficiency and is updated on a three-year cycle. The baseline energy conservation requirements of the Massachusetts State Building Code are the IECC with Massachusetts amendments as approved by the Board of Building Regulations and Standards. Stretch Energy Code, codified by the Board of Building Regulations and Standards as 780 CMR, Appendix 115.aa of the Massachusetts Building Code. The Stretch Energy Code is an appendix of the Massachusetts Building Code based on further amendments to the International Energy Conservation Code, IECC, to improve the energy efficiency of buildings built to this code. Section 5.05D-2 Purpose. The purpose of 780 CMR 115.aa is to provide a more energy-efficient alternative to the base energy code applicable to the relevant sections of the building code for new buildings. Section 5.05D-3 applicability. This code applies to residential and commercial buildings as applicable per 780 CMR. Section 5.05D-4 Stretch Code. The Stretch Code, as codified by the Board of Building Regulations and Standards as 780 CMR, Appendix 115.aa, including any future additions, amendments, or modifications, is herein incorporated by reference into the Town of East Long Meadow general bylaws, Chapter 5.05D. Section 5.05D-5 Enforcement. The Stretch Code is enforceable by the Building Commissioner and effective as of January 1, 2022.
Second.
Thank you for reading the byline to the record. At this point in time, I will introduce the council that's present this evening. I'm Mike Kane. And to my left on the screen is Don Anderson. And just below me, Connor Roche. And to the bottom left, Marilyn Richards. Jeannie, could you read the legal notice into the record, please?
Sure. The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 12, 2021, at 6:15 via Zoom webinar for the purpose of addressing the adoption of the Stretch Energy Code. Information relating to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public on the town's website. For the council, Jeanne R. Quagladdy, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you, Jeannie. The applicant being the Town of East Long Meadow. I can, I can ask Mary or anyone else to speak on the reasons and the rationale for the proposed amendment. Mary, I believe, I believe you spoke on it at the last meeting and this is the second reading, so maybe we can get just a briefing on on the reasons and the rationale for the proposed amendment.
Sure. Essentially, the the town master plan has adopted the the ideal of becoming a green community. The Stretch Energy Code advances those objectives. It is intended to, you know, obviously to improve energy efficiency in new construction under the watchful eye of building commissioners throughout the Commonwealth. I think that the reading at the last, the explanation at the last meeting was perhaps more comprehensive than what I'm giving you right now, but I have to admit you've caught me a little bit unprepared on this, Mike. I don't have any literature here to which I can refer for specifics. Other than to say that we, that the town is, has demonstrated a desire to move forward and and become a green community, which will entitle us to apply for a lot of additional grant funding and other programs that we would not otherwise be eligible for.
That pretty much says it off, so I appreciate it. And not trying to put anyone on the spot, but again, it's a, it's a, it's a second reading and I remember the outcome from the first meeting, so I will say that at this point, I can open up the public hearing for public comment. If anyone's in the audience, I'll last on here shortly. And if there is anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this subject matter, to please identify yourself and state your address for the record, please. Don, do you see anyone?
I don't see any hands up yet. Nor yet.
Okay. Pretty much same situation as last time. I think this makes a lot of sense as it was addressed. And we will close the public portion of the hearing at this point in time. And I will ask for a motion to approve the adoption. And Marilyn, can you provide us with that?
Absolutely. My motion to approve the adoption of the Stretch Energy Code bylaw as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Connor?
I just wanted to echo the sentiment that Mary just presented as the rationale that it's great that we're already making traction on the master plan since this was one of the things that came out of it. So it's good that we're not just putting it on the bookshelf and forgetting about it.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. And this is, this does require a roll call vote. I believe that the public hearing should be closed prior to roll call voting here. So I'm going to back up here a little bit and close the public hearing and continue with a roll call vote. And I'll start with Don up at the top. Don? I believe it was a yes.
It is a yes.
Thank you. I'm a yes, Connor?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you all. Bear with me here for one moment. Let's see. Okay, so our second public hearing for this evening, scheduled for 6:30, is regarding the liquor license fee schedule bylaw. This is a public hearing and this is a first reading for the proposed liquor license fee schedule bylaw. And Connor, do you have that bylaw in front of you?
I do.
All right.
It's a proposed bylaw for the
I'm, I'm sorry, hold on one minute, Don?
Yeah, I was just wondering, is, do we have a regarding the motion to continue a public hearing? Or is that later? Because I'm just looking at the order of motions.
I think that will come after we open the public comment portion and then continue.
Right, of the public hearing that we're, we're addressing right now.
The liquor license fees?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a first reading and there will be a second reading, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proposed bylaw for the Town of East Long Meadow, purpose to update bylaw 6.050 by adding a fee schedule to the liquor license rules and regulations, Section 6.050E, and changing the heading to 6.050 Liquor License Rules, Regulations, and Fees. 6.050 Liquor License Rules, Regulations, and Fees. E, Fees. One, annual liquor license fees. A, wine and malt off premises, $1,000. B, all alcohol off premises, $2,000. C, wine and malt on premises, $1,000. D, all alcohol on premises, $2,200. E, club, $650. F, Veterans Club, $650. G, Farmer Series Pouring Permit, $500. Two, one-day liquor license, $65.
Okay, I'll introduce the council once again, present at this evening's meeting. We have Don Anderson, I'm Mike Kane, Connor Roche, and Marilyn Richards. Jeannie, could you read the legal notice into the record, please?
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 9, 2021, at 6:30 PM via Zoom webinar for the purpose of addressing the adoption of a liquor license fee schedule. Information relating to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public on the town's website. For the council, Jeanne R. Quagladdy, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thanks, Jeannie. You know, I was, I was hoping that, you know, Kathy might be here, but she still has family urgent matters taking place at this time. Jeannie, would you want to comment at all on the reasons and rationale?
Sure. So recently, the council approved a Farmer Series Pouring Permit, which is the first for the town. And since it was the first permit of this type, there wasn't really an established fee. At the same time, actually, Counselor Ralph Page brought up that we should include all the liquor license fees as a fee schedule into the bylaws, which hadn't been there yet. So this is like killing two birds with one stone. We're going to include the liquor license fees into the bylaws, including the new Farmer Series Pouring Permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So at this time, once again, the public will now have the option to speak. I would ask for names and addresses if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this hearing. Don, do you see anyone in the audience?
I do not.
Okay. Just giving it a couple of seconds here. At this point in time, I'm going to close just the public portion of the hearing, not the hearing itself. And because it is a first reading, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for a second reading and adoption.
I move to continue the public hearing to address the adoption of a liquor license fee schedule bylaw to December 14, 2021, at 6:15 PM.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote, starting with Don Anderson?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Connor?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you. 6:45, we're gaining on this. But we're, we're within the timeframe, so this is, this public hearing protocol is in reference to the transfer of the liquor license from Patsy's Restaurant on North Main Street, scheduled for 6:45 this evening. The reason for this public hearing is to approve the transfer of an all-alcoholic beverage on-premise license from Patsy's Restaurante located at 600 North Main Street to We Management LLC, doing business as Akira Asian House. Council members are, at this meeting, Don Anderson, myself, Mike Kane, Connor Roche, and Marilyn Richards. Jeannie, do you have a legal notice you can read in, please?
I do. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws that We Management LLC, DBA Akira Asian House, has applied for a liquor license transfer of an all-alcohol beverages on-premises license currently held by Patsy's Restaurant, 600 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, to We Management LLC, DBA Akira Asian House. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, November 9, 2021 at 6:45 PM via Zoom webinar. Please see the link below to join the webinar for the council, Jean R. Quagletti, town clerk, clerk of the council.
Thank you, Jeanie. And Don, I see that the applicant is in the audience now?
Yeah, they're actually in the Zoom, Mike.
All right, that's great. Good evening, and thank you for attending the meeting this evening. And could the speaker please identify themselves and state your address, please?
My name's Don McDonald, attorney, on behalf of Mr. Nye here, We Nye and Que Chen, husband and wife, managers, applicants.
Thank you. Would you like to give us a brief scenario on the business plan and your business model?
Sure. The plan is to rename the, the existing restaurant is Patsy's Restaurant, and you guys are all familiar with that. It's 600 North Main, it's an Italian restaurant. These guys have another associated company of theirs have bought the property, and they're planning on to transfer the liquor license and, and operate an Asian cuisine restaurant at the same property. Basically, there's not too many, there's no structural changes. And the, the menu's changing, the sign has changed, as you may have seen it, they've already hung up a new sign, a permanent sign. And that's the situation. These guys are well experienced managers of bars and restaurants for their entire adult life, and they have an opportunity there to start their own business and operate it in East Long Meadow, and we're excited to have them there, and hopefully you guys will be too.
All right, thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to open up the, the hearing for our general public. Can ask Don Mackey if anyone's in the crowd, and if he sees anyone with their hand up. Again, I would ask to state your name and address for the record. Don?
No hands, Mike.
Okay. We will close the public portion of the hearing. And I will ask the council if council has any issues, concerns, or questions for the applicant or our clerk. Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. No questions, just a comment. This application has gone through quite smoothly. I'd like to hopefully welcome you to East Long Meadow, and I hope our residents are good to you. This was an amazing restaurant for a number of years, and we hope that reputation will filter down to you folks as well.
Thanks, Marilyn. Any other comments? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We all feel the same way. We will work toward getting this done and wish you many years of success. That being said, we'll entertain a motion to transfer the all alcoholic beverage on premises license.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of an all alcoholic beverages on premises liquor license from Patsy's Restaurante, 600 North Main Street, to We Management LLC, DBA Akira Asian House.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. This is a vote that requires roll call as well. Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Connor?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
All right, the transfer is moving forward. We wish you years of success and await your opening. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jean.
Okay. So we're a little, little bit early, five minutes, which we're not, not tied to a timeframe here, but the next order of business is our tax classification hearing. Don, do you see Diane or any of her colleagues in the audience?
I do, sir.
Bring them in at your leisure, please. Jeanie?
I think we have to wait till seven to open the, the public hearing. It's not quite seven yet.
Okay, yeah, my watch clock is just a little bit fast, so we'll bring them in and we won't, won't formally open until we strike seven o'clock. How's that?
Sounds good.
They have to open their meeting, I believe, anyway.
Correct.
Right.
Mr. Johnston.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi Diane, how are you?
Good evening.
I waved to you, I wasn't sure you saw it. Oh. Well, there's a whole group of you here, so I gotta watch them all now.
So technically, we have to wait just approximately three minutes to meet the schedule of the seven o'clock timeframe, but I do realize that you have to open your own meeting as well, correct?
That is correct.
So I believe you, you can probably open your meeting before we open the public hearing. And we'll, we'll run the clock to seven o'clock and continue along, so.
I just, I just tried Bill again. Oh, he's, there he is.
Hi Marty.
Hello, everybody, how are you guys?
Good.
Good, how are you?
Great, thank you.
Hey, Bill. I see a silver.
I'll wait to see if Marilyn pops on, because we have to open it in the different way tonight. Well, I can, I can start it because we have a second board member on. So thanks for having us, but welcome to the Board of Assessors meeting on 11/9. We will be joining the town council to do the tax classification hearing. And in attendance for the assessors is chairman Martin Grudgeon and member, board member Bill Johnson, director Diane Bishop. And we are being recorded by LCAT, and in my location, there is no video or audio. So. Sorry about that.
Or like.
Mary, have a question?
We have to wait till seven?
I just wanted to.
Go ahead, Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
I just wanted to say, my screen is showing that Marilyn's here. She's just not, she's muted and she's not on the video, but there's a screen that has her as a panelist, so I don't know if she's out there in, in cyberspace.
Okay, just in case, maybe she could be on, I'm not sure where she is. So I'll say in attendance, it would be Marilyn Cadini, also a board member. Thank you for that, Mary. So tax classification, Diane will take over after a few comments. Quite a year this year for values in East Long Meadow. All our assessment and values are based on the calendar year 2020, with a little peak on 21. Overall, our residential values went up about 6%. And we look at all arms length sales, we don't look at family sales. And for those in East Long Meadow, you probably know how the market's been, and other towns too. And our values went up 6%. It's based on assessment sales ratio, so we look at the sales compared to assessment. And because it's public knowledge, I can give examples, but I'll just give you one. For Spade Arden, there was a sale, a house built in the 50s of 1,500 square feet, sold for $385,000. So that house was assessed in the, between 200 and 300, and that's how the market's been going in our town and everywhere else. Well, that's how values rise. The good news is we're projected for a lower tax rate, and our numbers are great based on this. They're showing about a tax increase of about $153 based on valuation of $308,000. And that's our new average in town. We were averaged about $290,000 here in East Long Meadow, so now we're over $300,000 for the first time ever. That's about our 6% rise. Also, commercial stayed about the same and industrial. The good news for them, their average tax bill is going down about $530, and that is based upon a valuation just under $800,000. So they didn't move. The economy helped, helped out. We kept those values about the same, the tax rate going down. So overall, it looks good for coming up. It's, I think it was great news for the lower tax rate with the higher values, of course. And great job by the director, Diane. And we have, we weren't fully staffed, but we are for the first time. And our assessors office is going strong, and I would have to say 21 is a continuation of 20. Even though the values went up, they continued to go up probably for next year. We don't know where our tax rate is, but overall, I think the town should be happy with the lower tax rate and really an increase of $153 based on $308,000 is fantastic.
Thanks, Marty. We are now within the required time to open the town council public hearing. And tonight's public hearing is to determine the percentages of tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2022. Council members this evening are Don Anderson, myself, Mike Kane, Connor Roche, and Marilyn Richards. Jeanie, could you please read the legal notice into the record?
Sure. Notice hereby given in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, that the East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 9, 2021 at 7:00 PM via Zoom webinar. The purpose of this public hearing will be on the issue of determining the percentages of tax levies to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2022. All interested East Long Meadow taxpayers are welcome to attend this hearing using the Zoom link above to present any oral or written comments on the matter. In the event a taxpayer is unable to attend the hearing, written comments may be submitted in advance to Mr. Michael J. Kane, Town Council President, 60 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028, Jean R. Quagletti, town clerk, clerk of the council.
Thank you, Jeanie. Marty, am I to assume, did, did you tech, technically open your meeting yet?
Yes.
Okay. Then you, you are, any member of your staff here, if you want to present the proposed action to the council, that would be great.
Yeah, so pass that along to Diane Bishop.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to share a screen so we could, everyone at home could also see the presentation?
You should be all set, Diane.
Well, that's what you think. Let's see if I can really, really do it. Share screen. Oops. Hang on. This is where I always run into my issues here. Are we getting it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we do not have it.
Brian.
Okay.
Town council have copies? Okay.
So.
And they'll, they'll be available for anybody that would want to stop in the assessors office and pick those documents up if they have interest, so.
Okay, well, I'm sorry about that. I thought for sure I could do it, but I've only done it one other time. That was last year at the same time. So I will be posting this on our town website, so it will be available as of tomorrow morning. And so we'll jump right into it as council president Michael Kane just mentioned why we're here. We are here to determine if the town of East Long Meadow is going to have a single tax rate for all classes of property, or if we're going to have a split tax rate and shift the tax, the overall tax rate from residential and shift it over to commercial. Everything in this presentation, I always stress, our tax rate is not established yet. It has not been submitted to the Department of Revenue, and there is always an opportunity that something could change ever so slightly, a penny up, penny down, and the excess levy capacity could also change once we enter, do the final recalculation. Sometimes numbers shift ever so slightly up and down, so please be aware of that. So to. Did someone have a question?
Oh, I just wanted to ask, I have the presentation up on mine. Do you want me to try sharing it from mine? And you can read.
If you can, that would be great.
Sure. All right, do you see it?
I do.
Okay, cool.
Thanks, Connor.
So I think this is the one that you just finished, correct?
That is the one that I just finished, and I was just going to be moving on to the next slide, which is the town council and the decision that they would need to make this evening, and that is to have a single tax rate or a split tax rate. The town council could also vote to adopt a residential exemption and/or a small commercial exemption, and we will go through that a little bit later in the presentation to give you enough information to make any decisions. So if we get to our next slide, you're going to see that the fiscal '22 tax rate calculation, we always start with the prior year's levy limit, and we're able to add 2.5% to the overall levy and any new growth. So starting with $46,127,811, we can automatically add the 2.5%. And this year, with new construction, many new homes and a lot of remodeling and home improvements, we received in tax dollars 530,439 additional dollars that we can add to our overall levy. So then we can also add our debt exclusion, and you can see the items that we are still paying on principal and interest. And the total debt exclusion is $282,904, which brings us at the very last line, the new levy limit that we can appropriate to spend up to that dollar amount. We didn't, which is good news. So the next screen is giving you an idea of tax rate options. So when you're looking at this, the very first line of the, with the numbers, you're seeing the tax factor for residential and CPI, which stands for commercial, industrial, and personal property. If everything was a factor of one or a single tax rate for all property, we're projecting a tax rate of $20.34. You can see that we had 83% of our properties are residential, and the remaining commercial, industrial, and personal property is 17%. If you start to shift these numbers and just say, we're going to shift 5% over to the CPI or the commercial and industrial and personal property, you'll see that a residential property would decrease ever so slightly in the tax rate, but the commercial, industrial, and personal property will increase at least $1 just by that small shift. And if you continue to go through the slide, if the town council decided to vote the full 50% that is allowable by law, the taxpayer residential properties would see a decrease in the commercial property. the taxpayer residential properties would see a decrease in the commercial property, uh, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Their tax rate would go up over ten dollars, um, per thousand. So at very bottom in those small little letters, um, showing that the average, single-family uh, assessed value, as Marty mentioned a little bit earlier, is now standing at three hundred eight thousand, two hundred dollars. And our average commercial and industrial assessed property is valued at seven hundred thirty... Uh, I'm sorry, my print is small as I'm looking at this, uh, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. If they shifted a full fifty percent, an average taxpayer would save six hundred and forty-four dollars uh, overall, and a commercial, industrial, and personal property would see an increase in taxes of eight thousand and sixty-three dollars. So that's something that, um, the town council will need to take into consideration as we are looking at the single factor or a split rate. If we go to the next slide, this is just for illustrative purposes only. You can see I have years of, of fiscal year tax rates, the percentages of levy, and you're going to notice that we've been pretty constant with either eighty-two to eighty-three percent residential and the remaining properties between the seventeen or eighteen percent. Uh, naturally, things continue to rise, uh, as everyone's household budgets, the town's budget still has to rise in order to meet all of the services that are provided to our residents. And you can see on the very bottom line, if our tax rate, um, recap is submitted and approved, we're looking at twenty dollars and thirty-four cents per thousand. So the next slide, we always try to look at neighboring communities because we all have this tendency of saying that we're the highest or we're the lowest, or, and this is a really good, um, overview of where we stand in municipality similar to our size, uh, and close by. And you're going to see that we're kind of right smack dab in the middle. So the tax rates are ranging between eighteen dollars and thirteen cents to, uh, twenty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. But I always try to stress to people, it really doesn't matter what that actual number is. You have to look at the overall valuation of the community and their total tax levy. And that is how the tax rate actually gets determined. Before I go into residential exemptions, does anyone have any questions, uh, that they may have come up with? If not, we can move into residential exemptions. I only see a few people on the side of my screen, so I'm going to make the assumption that I'm good to move on to the next area. And so the next slide is residential exemptions. As I mentioned earlier, that this is something that the town council could consider adopting, uh, in the town of East Long Meadow. I will point out that there are only fifteen municipalities out of three hundred and fifty-one that have adopted this and have a very high percentage of rental properties. If you have a community with a large percentage of rental properties, this is something that you would want to consider. As you can see, uh, in bullet point three, the areas are more towards Boston and the Cape. So even if the, uh, a town accepts this exemption, it doesn't change the total value or taxes for that particular class of properties, residential. It just shifts the burden in between different properties within the residential, um, class. Uh, in the past, I have stated that with our community, we are pretty much an owner occupied. We do have some rentals. But I don't believe that we have enough rentals that this would be of a benefit to the town of East Long Meadow. Uh, and, but that is the final decision of the town council. And then the last one, an exemption that you could possibly adopt would be a small commercial exemption. Any property that is less than a million dollars and has no more than ten people, um, employed could qualify. And we generally receive a confidential list, uh, annually from the Division of Unemployment Assistance. When I do go through the list, I do see a lot of outdated information, so it's very hard to determine exactly how many properties could possibly qualify. In going through this list, there is a possibility that fifty-eight commercial properties could possibly qualify if this was adopted. But I do also stress that we have to look at the overall commercial and industrial value and tax burden. And it only affects a small commercial exemption for commercial properties. A lot of times we think this would be great to help the small business owners because we really try to promote, um, business in our town. It will not assist the small business owner unless they own the property outright. It only would affect the, the person who received the benefit is the owner of the real estate property. And again, similar to the residential exemption, there were only fourteen communities who have adopted this. Uh, and again, you can see at the bottom which communities they were. So that's what I have to present. And if there is, are any questions, please feel free. And thank you, Connor, for assisting me there. I appreciate it.
Done. Okay, Diane, thank you for a great presentation. Um, Don, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Um, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, um, I think sometimes in recent media, the East Long Meadow has taken a hit because we, you know, business moved out of here to go to another community. And I think our tax rate commercially currently and historically has been very favorable to businesses. So do you happen to know the tax rate, or, and again, I don't mean to put you on the spot for, uh, commercial properties in some of our neighboring communities such as Springfield and, um, you can pick a couple others, for example, if you will, if you like.
Um, I believe, and I do not know off the top of my head, but I have seen with Springfield, I believe it is in the high thirties.
That's, that's what I saw as well, but, uh, so I just wanted to make the point that East Long Meadow historically has been very, uh, tax-wise pro-business.
Typically, the cities have split rates and the towns do not.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, well, thank you for the presentation. At this point in time, I'd like to open up the, uh, public, public hearing to anyone that might be in the audience that might have, uh, questions or comments. Don, do you see anyone in the audience?
Yep. Sorry, my, my list jumps around. I just want you to understand.
We're all familiar with that.
Somebody and they move. Uh, Grace Barone, Baroni, sorry. Grace.
Hi, Grace.
Hi, hello. Um, thank you so much for this opportunity to, uh, speak with you this evening. My name is Grace.
Could you state your address for the record, please?
Uh, my name is Grace Baroni. I am with the ERC Five-Town Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we are located on North Main Street in East Long Meadow. And tonight, I'm here representing the businesses of the town of East Long Meadow. They are, they are struggling. It's been a difficult year for, for everyone, but, um, they've, they've had a lot of challenges with this, um, solvency rate increase, production, um, struggles to get items for production, uh, businesses that need to hire and they're having hiring struggles. The list goes on and on. It's been a difficult year for everyone, but they are struggling. We are very grateful, um, to the town of East Long Meadow and to this board for your support of a single tax rate. And we ask that you continue, um, to support us with that single tax rate for businesses. Our businesses are grateful for the support throughout this past eighteen months of the town of East Long Meadow and the community. Without their support, many of them wouldn't have made it through these times. And our businesses give back to the community. They give back with their time, talent, monetary donations, supporting youth organizations, sporting events. They give back with scholarships. And they want to continue to give back to the community to maintain the quality of life in the town. So on behalf of the businesses, um, I do ask for your consideration in ma- in maintaining that single tax rate, please.
All right, I, Grace, I want to thank you for what you do and, um, thank you for, um, chiming in this evening. And, um, it will certainly be taken under recommendation. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're very welcome. Don, anyone else?
Nope. I don't see anybody, Mike.
So, um, we'll, we'll close the, uh, public input and I will ask once again, um, any input from any council member? Okay, I would just say that, um, some of us have been here for approximately five years and, uh, um, we've had, you know, quite an opportunity to digest everything that Diane has presented and the, uh, the board. So it, um, it all makes sense. It was a very good presentation and I appreciate your time. Um, Connor, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you for putting together such a detailed presentation. I've certainly seen it as a resident in the past, this time being on the opposite side of the table, but great information. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, I think it's, uh, fair to say that we will, um, close the public hearing and I will ask for a motion. Um, Marilyn, if you could provide us with a motion?
Motion to approve that the town of East Long Meadow adopt for fiscal year twenty twenty-two tax rate a factor of one, a single tax rate with no residential or small commercial exemptions.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Um, Don Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, Mike Kane, I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Motion passes. And, uh, again, Diane, thank you and, um, and everyone else in attendance here this evening for a great presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
One point, quarter, Mike. Uh, do we need to let them close their assessment?
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to provide them that opportunity after we close. We, we close generally first. Um, which we did, we roll call vote, so, um, Diane.
Uh, I make a motion, uh, to adjourn our meeting and we will not be returning. Uh, I need Bill Johnson to unmute if he can.
Yes.
Uh, so he'll, you, you second a motion, though? Okay, great. Take a roll call vote to adjourn the meeting. Martin Grudge, and yes. Bill Johnson, yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, town council.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, um, moving along, under orders of the day, uh, there are no licensing matters this evening. Under financial, uh, matters, we have a quarterly budget report from Steve. If he could present that, it would be greatly appreciated.
Great. Thanks, Con. Thanks, Councilor. Uh, I'd just like to say that for this is for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, revenue-wise, we're pretty much spot on. It's twenty-four percent. Hundred percent of it would be twenty-five percent. The expenditures are showing at seventy percent. Uh, it's a little misleading, uh, when their school department, for example, encumbered a twenty-three million dollars of their salaries, which will skew it. It'll level out as we go throughout the year. Uh, one of the big things that happens every year in July, we pay our entire retirement amount for the year. It helps with, uh, interest and it gets us a better, we pay less in the long run if we do that. And so it's the, uh, four million, seventy thousand dollars. And so that also skews it. So we're, I see no significant issues at all. Um, we're going along pretty well. Uh, and I expect it to, the expenditure revenue difference to decrease as we go throughout the year. It'll, we'll have a better indication next quarter when we have half a year under our belts.
Great. Um, under financial matters, um, free cash status update?
This is the part I like. Uh, the, we have a tentative free cash number right now is by no, I can't emphasize enough that it's not finalized, uh, until the state sends you guys all a letter saying this is what it is. But right now, we're estimating to be roughly five million dollars this year for free cash. Uh, it's a testimony to the leadership of Mary. I don't mean to put her on the spot there, but she, she led us and through a pandemic and is leading us now. And as a result, we had, uh, over two and a half million in turnbacks from the departments. We had, uh, carryover free cash from last year of one point six. So that, you know, that's where the majority came. Uh, the biggest thing is department heads and Mary and their astuteness in managing their budgets to the point that we were able to get all that money, uh, returned to us. And that's, uh, it'll be finalized hopefully in the next few weeks. Um, we hope to turn it into the state and then it's really on the state's schedule with tax rates and different things. It may not be quick, as quick as we like, but I think it will be done fairly shortly.
Good. All right. So what I'm hearing is, um, and I'd like everyone else to take notice of this that's chiming in. We were at one point six last year. We are roughly around five million this year. So, um, that speaks volumes on what's a recap of everything that's, uh, taken place over the year. And, uh, Mary, great job, um, with the department heads, uh, to certainly see a huge bump in our free cash. It's, it's, it's amazing. So.
Thank you. If I might, Mike, can I just, can I just throw a little shout out to every one of the department heads? Because perhaps I had to make some decisions, but they had to do the work and execute the plan and they, they did it admirably, particularly under the COVID constraints. Uh, can't say enough good things about each and every single one of them. So credit goes to them.
Teamwork at its best, right?
We got it. And Steve too identified some deficiencies from past years that he rectified, um, through some bonding. Um, and so that, that eliminated deficits which added to our free cash balance. And so he's, he's obviously one of eighteen, but he's doing a great job also. So thank you.
Okay. Marilyn?
No, no, I was saying thanks to Steve because Mary recognized him.
Okay, well, we're not going to let him get away that quick. He can continue on with the, um, historical trust.
I tell you, you guys have stuck with me for a while. Uh, the historical trust is looking to get sixteen hundred dollars to pay for the repair on the roof of their shed, which saw some historical, uh, artifacts. Um, I believe they might have a sleigh in there, uh, and some other things, books mostly, that when the roof was falling apart, uh, the wood underneath it was rotted and it was starting to leak into the shed. And they're looking to get that from the historical trust.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Um, Mary, do you have anything for us regarding Casella Waste Management?
Um, when there's a motion, Michael, I'm sorry, for the, um, for the transfer of the money.
Um, I, I don't have, yeah, I, I don't have that in front of me right here. That's right. We need to move sixteen. So, um, if you guys, if you could work it out, a motion in a second, that would be great.
I'll be happy to read the motion.
Thank you.
Motion to approve sixteen hundred dollars from historical trust to replace the historical mission headquarters shed roof.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that subject? Hearing and seeing none, uh, roll call vote. Don Anderson?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that. Um, uh, Mary, um, Casella Waste Management.
Um, I had, I was going to defer that to Steve. Uh, it's simply a request that you, uh, allow us to do a five-year term on that contract. That's all that's before you tonight. Uh, Steve can amplify if you want further information. And Liz Bone is also in the audience. She's our recycling coordinator. The contract will be with Casella. The contract will be with Casella. Procurement statutes in Massachusetts limit the term of contracts to three years unless there's a council approval of a longer term. We haven't executed the contract because we won't do that unless we know your approval is out there for the five years. It's slightly more money than our previous vendor, but there will be an anticipated improvement in service and they plan on using an additional truck. Any further particulars can be made available at a later meeting if you so desire. But tonight, for tonight's purposes, it's just a five-year term.
Okay, so I, I don't have a motion. Were we looking for a motion to approve that tonight, or?
I think we need a motion, yes.
I would like a motion for one reason to at least consider a discussion and then we can figure out where we want to go with this. So I'll accept a motion regarding the approval of the contract.
I move to approve a five-year term for the new trash vendor, Casella Waste Management of Massachusetts, Inc., per MGL Chapter thirty B, Section twelve.
And we have a motion in a second. Discussion. I will bring up that obviously Counselor Page isn't with us this evening. He's out of town. And he expressed concern about a five-year term. I believe maybe Steve or Mary, you can elaborate on the prior contract, were the prior contracts done with a cap of three years?
No, they weren't, Mike. The, the five-year term is cotemporaneous with our other recycling contracts and with our contract with the MRF, the Materials Recycling Facility and other contracts that run concurrent. And the prior contract with Republic was also a five-year term. So we have, and Steve can elaborate if possible, or Liz Bone, but I'll look into it because I was not aware that there was any concern about the length of the term.
It just came up in a conversation because I, you know, I called and asked him if he was going to be in attendance or if any, if there was anything of particular interest and the five-year term came up and I, I think, you know, there might have been conversations that three years were the average term, but be honest with you, I don't remember either. But they were five years in the past and this seems to be pretty much industry standard.
Well, yes, and if you don't mind, I don't mean to put Liz Bone on the spot, but if she's still in the audience.
I just brought her in, Mary.
Oh, great. Thank you, Don.
Hi.
Hi, Liz.
Can you maybe lean a little closer, Liz, to your, your microphone and your computer?
Hi, can you hear me?
That's much better.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yeah, loud and clear. Yeah.
The issue is that the trash company needs to purchase new trucks for our town. So usually trash hauling companies do not go with a three-year term because they need to justify paying for those new trucks, which cost about a million dollars each.
Yeah, well, it would make sense to amortize that investment. They need to know they have a customer going forward to get a return on that investment. So.
Right. And it's very common in the industry.
Yeah, I did want to bring that up because it was mentioned and fairness to Ralph, it's, it's nice that we can address that his concern. Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none. This is a roll call vote as well. We have a motion and a second. So we'll start the voting with Marilyn.
Yes.
Okay, I believe that's a yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Loud and clear. Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So Liz, thanks for sticking around and being able to offer any information needed. Mary, thank you. And Steve, thank you as well. So.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are now moving along under old business. And this is to amend a vote to accept the re-presenting plan. And I know I'm talking to the right person when I asked Janie, which you can help us with.
Sure. So the local census is done every year, as you know, and the federal census is done every ten years. So from the 2010 federal census to the 2020 federal census, there was an increase in population in East Long Meadow, which caused the state to deem that we needed a fifth precinct. So at the last council meeting, you approved the re-presenting plan for 2020, which was largely the map. So I certified that vote. I sent it into the state and they informed me that the vote needed to include the new boundary descriptions. And the boundary descriptions are all text, no running northerly from Main Street to such and such. And there were two landmarks that they called unknown. And I didn't know that I was supposed to name these unknown landmarks, which I've done. And I sent it back to the state and they said that was good, but we needed to have a new vote from the council that includes that phrase, including the corrected legal boundary descriptions. That didn't stop the state from moving forward. In fact, last week they approved seventy-five towns with the, they had a certified vote for the new precincting plan. So they moved forward that, forward with that and we're good to go, but we just need this formality so I can send this to the state to complete our package.
Okay, so just to recap, we did vote on this at the last council meeting, short of the boundary lines. We've added this specific information and we can vote on it again tonight. So I'll accept the motion. And Marilyn, could you present that motion, please?
Actually, Don, it's your motion and I'll second it. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept as presented by the town clerk, the 2020 re-presenting plan for the town of East Long Meadow, including the corrected legal boundary descriptions.
And I'll second that.
Okay, thank you for the motion. And the second discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Connor?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about some of the confusion with the motions. I can give you a brief explanation of what happens here as I start working on this with Janie way back. And there are amendments after amendments after amendments. And in lieu of saving paper and ink and everything else, sometimes my documents read a little bit different. So I appreciate everyone paying attention and making sure that we get everything right here. So.
For that vote.
What's that?
Welcome.
Just thank you for that vote. Now I can send that along to the state.
Oh, well, thanks for getting to boundary lines and completing it. So. Okay, so the, the next subject matter is the Town Council Code of Conduct. And this is kind of a favorite spot where I get to. I was gonna say call on Connor here without giving him any forewarning, but I think everyone knows that Kathy and Jesse spent a lot of time working on a code of conduct. Yeah, we moved off to subject matter and jumped back on it. And Don, you were instrumental as well. So my suggestion is, without having Kathy here, that we formalize the subcommittee and I would ask Connor if he could participate in helping. And there is a a reason for that, that Connor comes with no preconceived bias. So I think he'd be an excellent addition to the committee and we can take all the results. I want to say that I'm not sure if the general public's aware of this, but I sent an email out to the council this week asking for everyone to submit input. And then have Janie formalize that. And Marilyn helped me with this process as well. And the results are in and it's been formalized, but in my opinion, if it's the council's wishes, I would like to see that document go to Kathy when Kathy can return and spend a little bit of time with Don and Connor and formalize this code of conduct moving forward. That being said, I met with Mary today and I was able to have a conversation with regarding the code of conduct and a particular page in the charter. It's from page eight and it starts under section nine, access to information. So the reason I want to read this is because the conversation that I had with Mary was that Mary is willing to continue on working with us if we can comply with the section that I will read in here shortly and stay with us till January third. And that is a huge benefit to the town. I would say that there's many facets of business that myself and Mary and department heads are working, working on right now that's ongoing. Subject matters such as contracts that it would be a shame to try to bring an acting town manager in right at this point in time and try to intervene and get, get all these loose ends tied up. Another important piece that I thought about was it causes a lot less disruption for the department heads. We're also entering a holiday season where trying to attract somebody for a job and continue with this, I, I would much rather wait till after New Year's. Another big burden is that there's been a lot of controversy probably pretty much split around town that if we were to choose an acting town manager, that some people feel that that acting town manager should not be able to apply for the full-time position. So that being said, if we take all that, all that, all that into consideration and at a face value, the last issue that I talked about completely goes away. It kind of puts everyone on a level playing field. If Mary were to stay till the third, we would not need an acting town manager. We can continue with the process and I will explain that process going forward. I've spent quite a bit of time working with our HR department. So that would be the plan. Let's see, I am just unindated with documents here today, but so in short, the, the plan would be if the council has an appetite for this, Mary would stay till approximately January third. It eliminates the need to put on an acting town manager. What we put into motion today is myself and Joan is the advertisement for the full-time town manager. We had put the advertisement out for the acting town manager last week. So both, both of those are out there right now. And as I previously stated, if Mary were to stay and it's the council's pleasure to have her stay, then it would eliminate an acting town manager. The let's see, so advertising for the full-time town manager went out on ND and once that's posted, it will be, it gets picked up by Monster, Glassdoor, ZipRecruiter. It's advertised on the town's Lincoln page. So we're, we, the suggestion is from HR and other towns that Joan spent time getting information from and her time working up at University of Mass would be to, it would give us time to see, compile a list over, let's just say, the next thirty days. And if, if, if that list doesn't achieve the results that we're looking for, at that point in time, we still have plenty of time to engage with a outside entity as we did in the past. So that's what's laid out. Anybody that has any questions, I'd be happy to talk about that. But before Mary would accept staying here, I feel for her protection that I'd like to read into the record page eight from the charter. And if I just jump down to expedite things, under notice, it says, except in the case of an emergency, the town council shall give not less than five days' notice in writing to any person it may require to appear before it, under the provisions of this section. Notice shall be given to the town manager. The notice shall include specific questions on which the town council seeks information and no person called to appear before the town council under this section shall be required to respond to any question not relevant or related to those presented to the person in advance and in writing. Notice shall be by delivery in hand or by electronic mail with notification of receipt requested or by registered or certified mail to the last known place of residence of any such person. So what does that all mean? The conversations that myself and Mary had, I believe this adds a level of protection where she offered to continue to be able to stay here till January third. And I can tell you what I would do, do on my end. And I would like the same response from any council member at a meeting, that if anyone's out of line and does not pertain to the subject matter that I just read into the record, that I will call them out of order. Or I would expect any council member on the board to do the same thing so that our manager does not have to have a repeat occurrence of what's happened in the past. It addresses the letter that was written into the, written into our meeting this evening from the resident. And Mary's comfortable with it. I'm comfortable with it. And at this point in time, I would ask if anyone else has any comments or suggestions that would like to speak on the matter. Marilyn, I saw your hand first.
Mike, wow, that's a lot of information to, to sort through, but on what you just read from the charter, we're in sort of under the category of code of conduct. And I know we have subcommittee that's put in place to review the submissions of the counselors. I just want to share that what I submitted is that we add a, a item number six, that counselors are to uphold the intent of the town charter. Article two, section two-nine regarding access to information. At no time shall a counselor or counselors engage in confrontational discussion with a town manager slash department head regarding information that has not been submitted in writing to the town manager slash department head at least five days prior to the council meeting. Now this section, it's important to me that we discuss it. And obviously you're bringing it up and it's, I'm submitting it as part of the code of conduct. This was mentioned in Mary's letter of resignation. And so and I know I've witnessed two situations where this has occurred. And so to nip this in the bud, I really appreciate the fact that you brought this up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So in recap, first I'd like to ask Connor if he would, accepts to participate with Kathy and Don to finalize?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's great. Then Janie, maybe we could formalize this. You could, you could send a letter out and and I, I appreciate that. I'm sure Mary does as well in the, the rest of our consults. So we're moving forward with it. We've compiled everyone's results and the reason we're not going to get into all the specifics this evening is because we're going to have a subcommittee that's going to work, work on that and refine, take into consideration what's relevant and what's not relevant. And then it will come back to this council and this council will vote and adopt a code of conduct. Is that fair to say? So that's the protocol. Mary, I can't tell you how happy I am when I left your office today and it, it it just gives me great pleasure to, pleasure to be able to announce that that I'll have the ability and the luxury to be able to work with you for another thirty days through this endeavor. Connor?
Thanks, Mike. A couple of comments on all of the topics that we just kind of went through. I wholeheartedly agree with the, the charter, of course, and that section two point nine with the five days of written notice. But I do wonder for the benefit of all the counselors, we tend to only get the information, especially the agenda and supporting documents Friday. we tend to only get the information, especially the agenda and supporting documents Friday. And so, and so that we can wait till the last minute to post in case there's any changes, which is fine, but that doesn't technically give us the five days to submit written comments or questions before our next meeting on Tuesday. So in order to give Mary or any other town employer or department head the opportunity to do some research and address it in a timely manner, should the counselors receive the information earlier than Friday? Especially if the information's known further in advance?
I, I, what, what I've experienced is it's, it's not information that's coming from the agenda. Mary, maybe, maybe you can help a little bit with this. And I, I think you know where I'm going here. It's why, why you're, you're receiving or council members are receiving the information late is kind of what I spoke about earlier. It's, it, it changes. And Jeannie can attest to the fact that we amend this agenda sometimes three or four times. So it's, it's just the way it is. It could be people's schedules. It could be Jesse's schedule. It's trying to bring everything into line and have it, have it ready for the meeting. But the subject matters that, that I'm talking about, that the council charter references, I find very different than the agenda, that, that's what's posted on the agenda. And Mary, maybe you can add to that.
Thanks, Mike. My, my thought on that Connor is that I generally author my town manager reports on Thursday, which does give five day, of course, Jeannie never remembers to send them to the council. So joke, it's a joke. So theoretically you would have five days in most instances. However, I guess the other option there would be that perhaps the issue wouldn't be addressed until the following council meeting. In other words, you know, not necessarily the Tuesday following the report, but the, the next meeting. But in all honesty, adherence to this rule is intended, at least from my perspective, to professionalize the conduct and the demeanor that is, has been demonstrated or not been demonstrated in the recent past toward me and to department heads in general on occasion. I spoke at length with one of the chief authors of the charter. That's attorney Larry Levine. And Larry and I had a conversation that suggested to me in spades that the purpose of article 2.9 was to eliminate these sort of unprompted, I hate to use pejorative words, but I'm going to say attacks on the department head or the manager in sort of a gotcha moment. There's no attempt on my part or in the two years I've been here on any department heads part to hide or shield anything from the council. Oftentimes we don't have all of the information at our fingertips. And it's no fun to do your best and then have somebody just effectively lie in wait for the camera to go on and, and then think that they've, they've got you in one of those gotcha moments. So that's what in my opinion 2.9 is intended to prevent. And it's less important for me going forward because I'm not rescinding my resignation. I'm only extending my notice period. For the reasons that Mike said, I'm trying to eliminate the, the difficulty for the department heads over the next month of dealing perhaps with an acting manager and then perhaps a different person as the permanent manager. I, I think we, we're doing a disservice if we don't quantify the cost of that to the town operations in general. But any, any case, the, the, the five day notice, I, I think doesn't have to necessitate a response at the very next meeting. And maybe if it's a simple question, it can be answered at the next meeting. I mean, a lot of things don't need five days of research, but they do need five or 10 minutes off camera. And so it has not been a problem with six sevenths of the council in the time I've been here. So I don't know if that helps or further muddies the waters, but that's my view of it.
Thank you. We both experienced the same thing and Jeannie?
Yeah, just two things. One, Mary, I deserve that humor from you. Second, the five days could correlate with rule five D of the council rules that asks that any, that's filing deadlines for regular meetings that asks that anybody that wants to submit business for the next regular town council, do it five days before the meeting. So that I think the purpose of that is to give us time to prepare the agenda that, as we know, is pretty much fluid from the time up to the meeting, but at least we can set an agenda in a meeting notice by the 48 hour deadline. So that can correlate with that council rule too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I obviously kind of flowed, both these conversations coincided here with, you know, the code of conduct in the discussion regarding the town manager search. So rather than repeat everything, I'm going to open up the floor and just answer questions if I can answer the questions because I, I basically I think tackled both of these in that long-winded conversation of mine. So Marilyn and Connor, I see both hands up and Don, you know what? I'll start with Don, then I don't have to pick over.
Just real quickly, I, I'm just, I'm very delighted that Mary's staying for an additional month. And so, you know, great, great cooperation between our council president and Mary and anyone else who is involved in getting this to happen. So bravo.
Thank you, Don. Connor?
Thanks, Mike. I echo Don's sentiment too, that it'll be great that Mary will stick around and help us for another month. And I'm sure she'll continue to do great things for us during that time period. But I do wonder if that still doesn't necessarily give us enough time to actually complete the search for a permanent manager, at which point we'd be back in a potential situation of finding another interim person, especially if we go through this whole search just to find, we didn't like any of the candidates or not enough candidates applied and we have to extend the timeframe again. And then my second thought is I'm, although I appreciate the hard work that I'm sure everyone has done to have the town, including the HR department or something, post and try to do the process ourselves. And I certainly don't like the fact that it would cost the town a good sum of money to conduct a professional search externally. But I do like the fact that we did that process last time. I think it adds a layer of transparency to it rather than us trying to do it ourselves, especially when not everyone in the public understands that it's not the whole council that contributed to the situation that we're in. And potentially feels like things are being shielded from their view. I think this just adds that extra boundary that the council's not trying to muddy the waters with who we're going to pick next.
Great. Thank you. Marilyn?
What Connor has said is going through my head. We've gone through two searches, but we didn't have an HR department. And, and I'm not sure if the HR department somehow puts a different level in this process this time. But I'm, I'm concerned about, and, and you know, we're, we're not making a decision tonight, but I want to put it on the table that I'm concerned about taking the politics out of a, an appointment. And the only process I have experienced was Mary's appointment. And we had a committee appointed by residents in the community who worked with our firm, whatever the firm is, to vet the, the applications. We weren't involved as, at all as counselors. We, we knew nobody. I mean, we knew none of the names on the list, which I think made it a much cleaner process. And I know it's expensive. I really do understand that piece. I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm just really struggling with that part. You know, we're all capable of, of vetting and making good decisions, but I just am concerned about the politics of it all. So I, that's, that's my thinking at this point.
Well, we, we, we will figure this out. I mean, we have Mary here for January, we get through the holiday season and I think it couldn't be a worse time to, you know, change, change managers right now and even, even in acting, trying to engage in the middle of, of Thanksgiving and our, our Christmas season and New Years, when we're starting to touch on, on our capital budget and we're trying to ratify contracts. So this is great news and, but the process is started. So we're not wasting time. That advertisement for the full-time manager went out and it's, it, it's gone out wherever we'd go, even with a professional entity. And we will decide as a group after a, a short duration of time, whether we want to engage with one of those companies or not, based on what our HR department has to bring forward to the council. But I'm pretty comfortable that knowing this group and, meaning our council members, our manager, our town clerk, that politics, this is, is going to be what's best for our community going forward, not politically driven. So
Mike, excuse me? Mrs. Iwanicki is in the audience. She maybe would like to speak to some of this HR issue?
That's up to the council. We, we have a game planned down. I spent a lot of time, I went over the highlights. It's, does anyone want to hear from Joan right now with any comments on what we've worked on over the last couple of weeks?
Sure.
I would love to hear from her to see how she feels about where we're heading.
All right, let's, let's bring Joan in.
Hi.
Hi, Joan.
I might have a problem with my, my video, but can you hear me?
I can hear you. We can all hear you very well.
Okay. So I wanted to just point out that it is beneficial to have a local search before you have a national search. And the search that you're going to have, if you hire a firm, will be a national search. You can still have all of those things. You can still have a committee. But ultimately the town council will be making the decision of who to hire. So I've told Michael that I can provide you with the tools needed to make a, a decision based on qualifications. And I can meet with you to give you guidance on how to make a decision. If the town council decides that they would rather have a committee, an advisory committee, we can also do that. It really, you're in control of this and I am here to support you. And so I just wanted to make that one comment. And so if you would like to talk about this after the fact, I'm here for you.
Thank you, Joan.
All right.
Thank you. Joan has been available every, every opportunity I've had to be able to reach out to her and put together great documents and great information that she was either able to put together from other communities and work experiences. So I'm sure we'll all enjoy working together and Joan is here for us to help us on whatever direction we decide to take. So.
I thank you, Mike, for working hard on this. I, you know, it's, it's a, a moving, moving project. I realize that. I just wasn't sure with, based on my, you know, our previous experience and the fact that we're dealing with an HR manager now, whether that changed the plan. So I'm happy to have Mary stay. And, and can we switch the Ju, the January to June, Mary? No?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Well, whatever you did, Michael, can you get it at least further out?
Mary, it's simple. It's good work and relationships, right? It's a team, just like all of us here tonight. We're all working toward the same objective. And the easiest way for me to clarify if somebody says, oh, are we moving in the right direction? How are things are going? When I hear a number of like a five, $5 million in free cash, I mean, that, that kind of says it all. It's like, that's a recap of what's taken place over the year, not struggling over what a, a hire is going to be called. I'm trying to look at the big picture and have forward thinking here. And I, I believe that's what the residents expect. And that's what we're elected to do. And I appreciate all of your help because I, I couldn't do this without your help. So thank you all.
Bravo.
But I, as I said before, I have pages and pages and pages here. It's so easy to get distracted, but under new business, we, we have no business, new business. Our action plan for the next meeting is that hopefully Kathleen, Kathleen's back with us, Ralph's back with us. Connor, Don, Kathy have conversations. We continue with our code of conduct. That being said, I would entertain a motion to leave our open session and enter into executive session and return it open for the purposes of adjournment only.
I move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collect bargaining for police union local 482 as an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. Then return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, I'm hearing and seeing none. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Don Mackey, would you like a text when we finish our executive session?
Yes, please. That would be great. Thank you very much. Sorry about that before.
That's okay. We're right on schedule. We're back and open, Don?
Yes.
And recording is running. Thank you. So before we adjourn, the only thing I'd like to add is we, we talked about the parade on November 11th. If you, if you're available, that's fine. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 15th, which is Monday at 6:00 PM. And I did talk with Kathy earlier. Kathy is continuing with urgent family matters and I'm hoping that she will be able to rejoin us shortly. I got, I got a message from Tom O'Connor that he's, he's dealing with a personal medical issue right now. And lastly, Ralph has taken a personal day. So hopefully we have a full board here back shortly. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Quick, I, as you guys know, I won't be available on, on the 15th. I'm going to be away. I'll just leave it at that.
All right, that's, I appreciate it and we'll make two. So.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second and we're all called vote. Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 8:20. Thank you all and have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, Mary.